All right, it's seven o'clock. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the remote meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Teresa Flynn.
Yeah.
John Samia.
Here.
Michelle Conlin.
Here.
And Carlos Garcia.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town manager Kevin Mizikar.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Keith Baldinger.
Here.
Assistant to the Town Manager Justin Dobson.
Yeah.
This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, House Bill three, five, four, eight, signed into law by the Governor on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Act, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Google Meet, which was posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or the guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting people to provide any comments or questions. I will then call upon members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six. If members wish to engage in conversations with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote will be taken by a roll call vote. And I would ask that if you're not speaking, to please mute yourself, just so that we don't end up with extraneous noise or echoes. All right, so the first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
So I'm going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number two is to review an act to approve the minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, which was a workshop, and January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, which was a meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
A roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number three is announcements and reports. Board members, do you have any announcements this evening? I just have one, and it said because we decided on a remote meeting before we realized that there wasn't going to be eighteen inches of snow today, we canceled office hours, and so we will have our next office hours. Taking that very squeaky toy and moving it. We'll have our next office hours at our February twenty-seventh meeting, so same time, five-thirty to six-thirty, Conference Room A. Just so that the public is aware. Item number four is the Town Manager's report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. Just a couple of updates for you and for the public. Happy to report on two successful grant awards that we received. Twenty-five thousand dollar grant for turnout gear for the fire department and a two thousand dollar grant for an automated external defibrillator, AED, for the police department, which will be placed into one of the cruisers. It'll help offset the cost of our rollout of AEDs to all police cruisers. And finally, I just wanted to inform the board that, given our conversation recently about ARPA and the need to ensure that we have everything finalized before the end of the calendar year, we will be presenting a revised recommended spending plan and update you on all existing projects and their status no later than April first. And I would anticipate that we'd need to seek your approval for a number of modifications at your first meeting in April. So we'll get you that information a couple of weeks in advance, or we can advance your meeting and get us on a path to make sure that we can spend all of the funds before the end of the calendar year. Thank you.
All right, item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy thirty-one. As far as I know, no one has signed up for public comment this evening, but if you do wish to make comments to the Select Board, we just ask that you let us know by the Monday before the meeting by noon. Move on to meetings and hearings. So seven oh five P M. Public hearing regarding the application of PMG Subaru LLC DBA Patrick Subaru, two forty-seven Boston Turnpike, regarding their application for a Class One and garage license. This is an item that's requesting our board to approve the Class One license. But what's really happening here, it's not any change to the business model or the operations of the business. But what we're doing here is making this change so that the owners can be, so the ownership can be transferred. So I believe we have people on the line here from Patrick Subaru.
No, good evening.
Good evening.
Jimmy Darty Dixon, I'm Chief Financial Officer of Patrick Motor Group, who is the owner of PMG Subaru LLC.
Great. And is there anyone else joining you this evening?
Just myself, yeah.
Okay, if you just wanted to tell us a little bit about this request.
The request is based on two things. First and foremost, Jimmy and his brother Neil Patrick are retiring after fifty-plus years of having that Subaru store. And their sons, David and Jason, are purchasing the dealership from them. And we're seeking approval for that transfer of the license to the new entity pursuant to the town bylaws.
Okay, are there any questions from board members? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? And again, I'll remind you that if you use star six, you can unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, what's the pleasure of the ward?
Move to approve the application of PMG Subaru LLC DBA Patrick Subaru regarding their application for Class One and garage licenses, subject to the same VBA Planning Board and Select Board restrictions on the existing license.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, so then we will. You're actually going to have to just hold on for a couple of minutes, Mr. Dixon, because it's not quite seven-ten and it's posted for seven-ten. So I'm going to move ahead to item number ten, which is to review an act on the streetlight request from Smeat to Anthony, forty-five Cypress Avenue, for streetlights to be installed in the vicinity of forty-five Cypress Avenue. And this was a request from a resident asking to have this, this streetlight looked at. They're asking for a streetlight. They're saying that their part of the street is very dark. Streetlight requests are initially sent to the Select Board, and then we typically vote on whether to send the request to Selco or for study and review. And then Selco will review the request and provide a recommendation back to our board on whether or not a light is needed, what kind of light and the associated cost. So if there aren't any more questions, I would just take a motion to approve sending this to Selco for review.
So moved.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number eleven is similar. It's to review an act on the streetlight request from Abdallah Al-Dual Dujali, ninety-two Green Street, for streetlights to be installed in the vicinity of ninety-two Green Street. So same process as described for item number ten.
Move to send the request to Selco.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, it is seven-ten, so we can go back up now to item number seven, which is a public hearing regarding the application of PMG Subaru LLC DBA Patrick Subaru, two fifty-seven to two sixty-one Boston Turnpike, regarding their application for a Class One license. So I will turn it back over to you again, Mr. Dixon, to give us a little bit of background.
Again, it's, it's a decent property that we're looking to have the license extended to. We use it as a storage lot. Give us more street frontage to display vehicles. The reasons for requesting the change is, again, simple. The fathers are retiring and their sons are buying their company.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Again, you just unmute by using star six. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the application, subject to the same VBA Planning Board and Select Board restrictions on the existing license.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Conlin.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, Mr. Dixon, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You had a great evening.
You too. All right, item number eight is a joint meeting with the Trails Committee regarding its one- and five-year plan. And I know that we have several members from the Trails Committee here with us this evening and a brief presentation. Trails Committee members, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and introducing yourselves.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lisa Grosskopf. I am the Chair of the Committee. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
This is Melanie McGee from the Trails Committee.
And is it just the two of you this evening?
As far as I can see.
It looks like it. It looks like it's all of us.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here. I'm sorry that we aren't able to do this in person. I was hoping that the weather would have cooperated with us. But we are looking forward to hearing about your work so far as an official Town of Shrewsbury Committee and also hearing about your plans for the near term and the long term.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So you're in control of my slides, right?
Correct, I am. Yeah.
Okay, can you please move to the next slide? Thank you. We've already been introduced. This is our first time as a committee before the Select Board and in front of the TV home audience, we would like to quickly review our Trails Committee Charter. Our charter is basically to develop new trails, enhance existing trails and public property, explore ideas for interconnecting Shrewsbury Trails, monitoring and maintaining existing trails, and promote the use of our trails. And to take a page from the two thousand and thirty Shrewsbury Strategic Plan, we are evaluating pursuing opportunities to improve transportation, including, well, including trails, which is right in with the two thousand and thirty plan. We hope that our presentation today sparks constructive discussion to enhance our vision and assist our execution as we begin crafting our plan. We've only been in existence for less than a year, and we've made some progress, so please change to the next slide. We are fortunate to have seventeen different parks within the town. We have six that have hiking areas on them that are beautiful. Six of them, well, not quite six, several of them have a mile, mile and a half, almost two miles worth of trails on them. Please change to the next slide. However, although we have lots of trails, they're short. A lot of them are less than half a mile, maybe a quarter mile long. Altogether, over seventeen parks, we have parks, we have ten miles of trails. And we have absolutely no trails in between our parks. The parking is very limited, except at Lake Street and Dean Park. Currently, maintenance is done by our volunteer committees, the Trails Committee, the Boy and Girl Scouts, and the Park and Rec Group. In summary, the trails are short and parking is limited in most areas. Please move on to the next. Thank you. Trails Committee Vision. Press enter again. We, so this is our new vision that we came up with. Connect the town, enrich the neighborhood. Please click on again. Our plan within the next five years is to establish walking trails between all of the major parks in town. We have, we would like to establish loop trails between a couple of the established areas to make our trail, our hiking areas longer and also to minimize the necessity of vehicles to access nearby parks and trails. With this, we will make our town much more walkable. We'll connect neighbors. We'll connect neighborhoods using means and lands already accessible to us. Trails are less expensive and more fun than sidewalks. We make, we will make natural spaces more accessible to the public. You know, then it's, there are studies that show that there are physical and mental health benefits for being in natures and being outdoors. Additionally, these trails can connect neighborhoods with parks and playgrounds, and they'll make them more accessible to families. And again, this will make, can make our town less dependent on motor vehicles. Please go to the next slide. So this is our vision of trails. Click again, please. Yeah, keep going. Oh, boy. Okay, thank you. The red line didn't show up on this map. We have arbitrarily. I gotta pop it. That's on my screen. Sorry about that. We have arbitrarily driven, writ, drawn a red line from Camp Lund again through Lake Street Park, up past Jordan Pond, and then on up to Carlstrom, across to Prospect Park, and then all the way up to Rossin Hill. Our eventual goal is to connect all of these major parks in town with publicly accessible trails. The trail in itself would be eleven miles in one way. We would use town land, accessible power line easements, and public roads. So that's number one. Number two, we would like to enrich the neighborhoods. We have three different colored circles on here, one where we would connect Camp Lund again and Lake Street Park together, making a trail network of about six miles. Another one where we have Carlstrom Park or Carlstrom Forest and Prospect Park and somehow get across the one forty and establish a hiking area of a good five miles. And then up to Rossin Hill, we'd like, there are some trails up there. We'd like to accept to establish public access in there. So that's our second vision, enrich the neighborhoods. We were asking for a startup budget for this, for planning purposes and tools. And in five years, we plan to triple the, the number of trails in town, both in miles and in number of trails itself. This is our vision. And we would, we look forward to incorporating future feedback and needs into our execution as info and opportunities arise. Next slide, please. And this is us. Our logo and our vision, connect the town, enrich the neighborhood. Questions?
So board members, are there any questions? Maybe we can stop the screen share, Justin, just so I can kind of get a better feel for who's raising hands. Any comments? Ms. Conlin.
Hi, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm, I, as you all know, I'm very excited about the work that you're doing on the Trails Committee. I had been out with Ms. McGee and former Selectman Mo DePaolo, starting some of this preliminary work as they, as we were preparing to set the Trails Committee up as an official committee for the community. I really appreciate all the work that you do. It's something I'm really excited about. I love the five-year plan, the vision that, that you've laid out. And I'm really excited about it. I think it'll really increase the quality of life in the community. I was just curious, as far, and this, I think, is a question for Mr. Mizikar. You know, they're requesting a thirty thousand dollar budget. It makes sense, you know, the work that they need to do to get a professional consultant to lay out some of the work before they move forward. And, but I was just curious if, you know, in the long term, if there's an ability for us to set up a fund where community members could donate to the Trails Committee, similar to some of the other funds we have in town, either Friends of the Center, or there's Friends of the Library, things like that, if there's a fund like a, where, where community members could make tax-deductible donations to the Trails Committee.
Sure. Yeah, so community members would have the opportunity to do that right away. Any donation that have a specific purpose, like if someone came in and said, I want to donate, you know, twenty dollars to the Shrewsbury Trails Committee, that would be set aside and put into a Select Board gift count, gift account, to be utilized for those purposes. Something like a Friends group would be more of a private nonprofit that's set up for the benefit. Solely of the trails, and they'd have to transfer funds into the town. So while either approach could be taken, the, the first is open and available right now if there's interest. And it would meet those criteria and be dedicated just for trails purposes.
If I may, I have another kind of question. So we have, you know, as, as we're looking at our ARPA funding, you know, with, there sort of some information has changed along the way on how we need to spend it. And if this is potentially something that we could reallocate some of that funding that we couldn't use initially or, you know, get under contract in time, but sort of falls, has the same spirit of how we initially allocated that funding. If we may be able to move it over to support the Trails Committee's endeavors here.
Well, that would be awesome, I would think.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. So I do want to thank you for the presentation and for the work that you're about to undertake on behalf of the town. As Select Board Member Conlin said, there are certainly so many benefits to connecting the town and increasing the number of trails and making things more walkable for people. And I liked how you said that trails are more fun than sidewalks, and I think that's very true. Let's hope that they're less expensive to build than sidewalks, because sidewalks are pretty expensive, as we all know. A question around the, the, the funding. I, I know we're working through budget cycle right now. I would guess that that is something that we need to take under consideration. And I know we talked a little bit right now about ARPA money, but figure out, you know, the correct number for year one. And again, I would assume that there are going to be financial needs in the following years as well. And I think we just want to talk a little bit more offline about that to kind of understand exactly where you see the five-year plan going and what you see the needs will be over the five years, so that we can make sure to plan and have that sustainable funding source for the Trails Committee to do their work.
Sure, sure. We're just at the bottom floor right now. We're just figuring out what we want to do, what we're going to need to do, and how much this is going to cost, so. We're asking at this point, just to make sure that we can get started.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, then we appreciate you joining us remotely this evening. And hopefully, we can have you back in person at a later date to receive an update on the progress that you're making on the trail.
Great.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
So item number nine is a financial update on the FY twenty-five budget, so I will turn it over to Mr. Mizikar.
I am going to share my screen. Share the master balance sheet with everyone. Okay, so I wanted to just take an opportunity before we get any further into the budget process and provide a higher level overview to the board of where we're at. So with regards to the timeline that we're on right now, we'll produce a balanced budget and share it with the board, with the Finance Committee and all other members of the public this Friday, February sixteenth. At that time, the budget will, we call that fiscal projection one, and fiscal projection one will move to the Finance Committee for their public hearing process, which will occur later in the month. We'll provide a full, detailed look into the budget and what's funded and, and all those related details at the Select Board's February twenty-seventh Board Meeting, which is your next meeting. And then we'll provide a detailed update to the Finance Committee later in that week on the twenty-ninth. So at this point, we continue to use a very similar revenue model. So I'll start at the top here, just shy of twelve, hundred twelve million dollars from the tax levy, rather similar to past years. I'll talk just for a second about new growth. New growth is those new structures that are constructed or additions on homes or new buildings that are put into place from last year that would be taxable in the new year. We're using a six-year estimate or average for our estimate as we start fiscal projection one. As you can see, that's a lot less than we actually realized in fiscal year twenty-four. But at this point in the budget process, it's important to ensure that our estimate is strong, but doesn't put us in a situation where we have to reduce our estimate because we don't actually achieve that growth. So the exempted levy, which is the levy that's raised for debt service purposes only, is actually declining year over year, which will provide modest relief to taxpayers. And this is the fourth year of the two thousand and twenty-one override for fiscal year twenty-five. We continue to be in a good position where we do not have to draw down on the override stabilization fund. We've exceeded revenue expectations, both this year and in previous years, which puts us in a really good spot. So fiscal year twenty-five is the fourth year, which was the commitment that the Select Board made to the community, the school committee made to the community. So with the passage of the FY twenty-five budget, we'll achieve that goal and definitely have another year ahead of us without needing an override for fiscal year twenty-six. With regards to state aid, we have maintained the latest information that we have from the state budget process, from the Governor's budget. Unfortunately, state revenues continue to lag behind estimates. The month of January alone was seven percent lower than the state's estimate for what they had anticipated to receive. So we're, we need to be very cautious with our projections for state aid throughout the rest of the budget process. The Governor was rather generous with unrestricted general government aid, a little bit less so with Chapter seventy educational aid that they provided to the community, which is over twenty-one million dollars of state aid. But we'll just have to see how the budget process plays out as it moves through the House and the Senate. The largest change that we've made from the revenue manual is an upwards adjustment in Schedule A receipts. This reflects our recent strong returns from fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. and continued strong um income for, for this category throughout the course of the first six months of the current fiscal year. We also know that motor vehicle excise commitment one, which is the largest motor vehicle excise commitment that has gone out to residents, was five hundred thousand dollars greater than the prior year. So it has surpassed um five point five million dollars for that one single billing for the first time. So then we uh have maintained relatively similar numbers for us, our utility revenue. Uh, free cash, although it's uh reduced year over year. This number is likely to change as we move forward through the budget process. We really take a, a more, a deeper look at our capital improvement plan and other one-time funding needs, including uh projects and other initiatives that town uh leadership identifies throughout the budget process. Other available funds is different year over year, but it's rather similar, what we haven't included or any uh inter-account transfers or Community Preservation Act funds, because those are unknown at this time. Uh, levy uh reduction initiatives are the same essentially year over year as they were in the prior year. So we anticipate a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-three point five million dollars in total revenue being available. At this point, we're uh anticipating a four percent increase in the municipal expenditures year over year. Four and a half percent in, increase in educational expenditures year over year. These numbers definitely are fluid at this point in the fiscal year. The, the, as I mentioned, there's a lot of revenue uncertainty, especially in state aid, which is our second largest category. We have to delve uh deeper into other one-time expenditure needs. Uh, so these numbers uh will likely change as we go throughout uh the budget process. The largest expenditure category that influences the amount of money that we need to raise from the tax levy is shared operating support. Um, the largest adjustment within that uh specific classification of expenditures is health insurance for active employees and retirees. And at this point, we're carrying a nine and a half percent increase for health insurance. And we'll have a final number on the West Urban Health Group meets later this week, but it should be right around that. That service um is just nearly flat year over year, uh twelve and a half million dollars. Our utility expenditures will be fully flushed out as we go through uh the balance of the budget process, but a rather similar year over year. Um, the one exception is uh ten point four percent increase in the solid waste budget as we transition into a new five-year agreement with a new holler. Uh, stormwater budget um is much higher year over year as we move into um the sixth year of having a stu- stormwater utility and begin to actually tackle some of the more cost uh costly expenses and, and meeting the requirements under our federal permit for stormwater um quality. So uh skipping down to the bottom, uh, at this point, um, again, projecting about a hundred and eighty-three point five million dollars in expenditures. Uh, we'll work to uh tick and tie everything and, and develop a fully balanced budget by the end of the week. We're almost there. Um, I just wanted to provide that uh higher level overview of where we are. Uh, we'll get into individual line items and department budgets um at your next board meeting. But we're in really good shape for where we are at this point, not only in the fiscal year, but in our uh override funding cycle as we move into the fourth year of the twenty-twenty-one uh framework that we established. I'm happy to take any questions and look forward to continue to work with the board throughout the budget process.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Samia.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, quick question. So the state had done nine C cuts earlier this year, didn't really impact us. If revenues continue to decline, where would that impact us, just in chapter ninety and unrestricted government aid? Because um, chapter seventy, they're going to just do minimum uh, just the thirty dollars per student, and that's all we're going to get. So we're not going to go any lower than that for the minimum state aid. Any other areas or those areas? We know unrestricted government aid took from like two thousand eight to the twenty-twenty-two maybe before it got back to levels but from those fourteen years, but where could risks be if the state goes to nine C cuts for us?
I think unrestricted general government aid is the category that they would um look to draw down from. Uh, all the other categories within the state aid um sheet, the cherry sheet that they provide us are really dedicated to specific purposes. That may leave some vulnerability uh from library aid. Um, but um I would see probably unrestricted general government aid being the most likely. That's also why I'm, we need to be very cautious about um the amount of money that we're projecting for state aid in fiscal year twenty-five. I'm very grateful that the administration has indicated that they would increase that unrestricted general government aid up three percent year over year. I just don't see how those numbers work at this point. Um, they continue to lose additional confidence uh as each month passes and they don't meet their revenue expectations. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, I just wanted to just note again, the careful management of funds, especially as we work through what's now the fourth year of the override agreement. I know that everybody recalls in two thousand fourteen when that override was passed. There was sort of a five-year commitment and that commitment was exceeded by several years. And we're on track to do the same thing with this. Um, it's not, you know, it's not by accident, right? I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into making sure that the budget um is created in a way that we extend the duration of the override, because we do understand the impact on taxpayers and that is front of mind when we talk about budgets. Uh, I know that Mr. Mizikar, that you spent a lot of time going through department budgets line by line and that you have um a very extensive list of things that aren't going to be in department budgets this coming fiscal year. Um, because we do need to be mindful of the finite pool of money and making sure that we are able to stretch it as far as possible before we have to come to the community and say that it's time to ask again. Um, that's not something that we take lightly and it's something that we spend a lot of time looking at uh and going through different models and, and making sure that we make the best decision possible with the information that we have. So I want to thank you for the hard work that you've put into the budget. I know Mr. Snowden as well. Okay, item number ten and eleven, we've already done. So we are going to move on to item number twelve, which is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign an application for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership MBTA Communities Technical Assistance Program. Um, so we had a very extensive presentation on MBTA communities at our workshop earlier this month. Um, for those watching at home, if you're a town meeting member and you aren't aware of the decision that is about to be made in our community regarding the MBTA zoning, uh, I would really encourage you to start checking out information on the Planning Board's website about this. Um, it's an important town meeting decision that will happen in May. Uh, but this is um a grant application from the Planning and Economic Development Department to ask for funding to allow um them to conduct an economic feasibility analysis relative to an increase in the required number of affordable units. Um, and this is something that we talked about um earlier this month when we met with Mr. McGoldrick. And so I just need a motion so that I can sign this application.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Mizikar, do you have anything to add? Okay, uh, I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Ms. Conlin?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
And myself, I. Okay, item number thirteen is to review an act on the one-day beer and wine license application from Michael L. Duquette of Saint Mary's Parish for the Saint Mary's Parish Lenten Fish Fry on March first, twenty-twenty-four from pork, four P M. to eight P M. And this is a request that we receive yearly, so Mr. Duquette was not required to be present this evening for us to act on his request.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Conlin?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
And myself, I. Item number fourteen is to review an act to sign the warrant for the March fifth, twenty-twenty-four presidential primary election. Um, so the copy of the warrant has been prepared by Town Clerk Sharon Thomas. And upon signing the warrant, so we return to Ms. Thomas and posted by a local constable.
We'll move to vote to sign the warrant.
Second.
Okay, do our roll call vote. Ms. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Ms. Conlin?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
And myself, I. Item number fifteen is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign the FY twenty-four Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Agreement and Contract. Um, so this item seeks the board's authorization for me as chair to sign this grant agreement and contract. The town was awarded thirty-five thousand dollars by the Massachusetts Office on Disability to fund the installation of Bluetooth assistive listening systems in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Conference Room A, the Fire Headquarters Training Room, side A and B of the COA, and both community rooms at the library. These systems allow a person with hearing aid with Bluetooth capability to connect directly to the audio such source. Um, and for people with older hearing aids without this capability, the systems will come with receivers and headsets that allow them to connect to the audio source. In addition, these systems come with a small sign that would be posted indicating that such systems are available if needed. Um, and I do want to just mention that this is possible because of the work done by Mr. Dobson. And thank you so much for your work on this. It's really important. Any other comments or questions? I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do our roll call vote. Ms. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Ms. Conlin?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
And myself, I. All right, item number sixteen, to review an act to appoint nine members to the three-hundredth Anniversary Celebration Committee to two-year terms set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Um, I want to thank Mr. Dobson for his help in organizing the voting. It's, this is notoriously a cumbersome process when you have to appoint um more than one person. But at least this time, all the terms are the same, and so that makes this a lot easier. Uh, so what ended up happening was we had put this out, didn't get enough interest, put it out again. Uh, we were happy that we had received more than nine applications, which is great, because then it gives us a little bit of choice. Um, and everybody received a spreadsheet to do their voting. So it was, we didn't know what someone else was, uh, who someone else was voting for. People were assigned a number of points. Mr. Dobson took those sheets, compiled the grand total for each candidate and then popped it into the drive just before the meeting started this evening. And so I am going to just read through the names of the people who were selected. But I do, before I start, I definitely want to make sure that everybody who applied knows how much their application is appreciated. And that even if you aren't appointed to the Steering Committee, we are going to need you and probably handfuls and dozens of other people in order to make this event a success. Um, and so we really do hope that people will start to get involved with this as the process gets underway. Um, and we want to thank those people who have stepped up because this is a massive undertaking. And hopefully it'll be a lot of fun and very rewarding, but it is also going to be a great deal of work. Um, and so the people who will be appointed are John LeBeau, Moira Miller, Melanie Petrucci, Gail Aslanian, Carol Ann McAdam, Nicole Torres, James Jolacure, Patricia Servio, and Anan Sharma. So I will take a motion to appoint those members to the three-hundredth Anniversary Celebration Committee for a two-year term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we'll do our roll call. Ms. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
Hi.
Ms. Conlin?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
And myself, I. Okay, that brings us to correspondence. So the first item of correspondence is item number seventeen. It's an email dated January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four from Gretchen Schultz Ellison, twenty-four Spring Street on behalf of Tipping Point oh one five four five regarding a sustainability committee initiative. And um just as a little bit of history, our board um for the past three years has collaborated with the members of Tipping Point um on different climate initiatives. And they were instrumental in bringing forth the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan and worked on that uh committee to find a consultant and uh create the plan. And they came to us um using a letter and then come, came to our office hours asking to create a sustainability committee. They had a draft charge. Our board met in our workshop last week. We talked through their proposal. Um, and we decided as a board that this is something that we are willing to put into place and establish on our own. Um, I know that they were looking to do a petition article and that may still be the case. But I just want to make sure that the board is updated, that I did follow up with Tipping Point um and let them know about our discussion in, in our workshop. And while no votes are taken in workshops, you know, you do get a sense of where people are and that there was a willingness to move forward with the Sustainability Committee. Um, and that the timeline for our board would be following the work that needs to be done to get us through the annual town meeting. So um the Tipping Point folks may decide to move ahead with their citizens petition. I'm not sure what their decision will be, but they are aware of our willingness to partner with them to create a sustainability, um, a permanent sustainability committee for the town. Any other comments or questions on that based on our workshop last week? Okay, item number eighteen is a letter dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one from Nick Repetta, Highway Division Manager, regarding the snow report um for the four inches of snow that we received on January thirty-first, I guess it was. Right, item number nineteen through twenty-two are all ZBA decisions. Um, item number nineteen is a ZBA decision from January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four for Kathleen Shepherd for a special permit for property located at nine Boston Hill Circle. Item twenty is a ZBA decision for January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four for Leonardo Silva for a special permit for property located at fifty-six Elm Street. Item twenty-one is a ZBA decision of January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four for Michael Connors for two variances and a special permit for property located at seven seventy-nine Hartford Turnpike. And item number twenty-two is a ZBA decision from January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four for Richard Ricker for a special permit for property located at forty-five Lakeside Drive. So we know all of those into the record. That's it. Um, so I don't know if anybody has anything else to come before the board in open session. Otherwise, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, one more roll call. Ms. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia?
All right.
Ms. Conlin?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Myself, I. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.